She did, there is.
I just have never seen that and I have a pretty good memory with that, which is why I wanted to go back to that.
I don't remember, whatever, because a lot I wasn't involved in, I don't remember. It could have been something that somebody was saying, but I don't want to back it up. Just, I don't trust anyone.
I have so many updates, I'm not going to be brief.
Okay, you gotta keep it under a term limit.
I, oh my god, do I have.
The password to the top tier of security officials, pound unlock, and thanks of capital.
It's always a good time.
You got the A P go put away? You got the A P, you got the ball put away?
Now I do.
Everybody good?
Good.
Good evening, this is the Ridgewood Village Council Public Workshop. The date is March 26, 2025, the time is 7:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting roll call.
Councilmember Mortimer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peron.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Winograd.
Here.
Mayor Vagianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's go right to public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Boyd, a loving Ridgewood resident. I'm wondering if tonight the manager could provide an update as to what is going to happen at the bus shelter or the bus station terminal in Ridgewood. Apparently, as if you take a look at social media, a lot of people were caught by surprise and didn't know that there were any plans to demolish that. Of course, those of us who pay attention to things that are going on knew it was going to happen. However, there have been a couple of comments made about what's going to go there. I remember a while back, it was said that New Jersey Transit had donated or was planning to donate two prefab shelters to put in the location. And then I believe a couple of weeks ago, I heard that the shelter that's back here that's used as the smoking station is going to be moved over there. But that seems like it really isn't going to be large enough to accommodate the crowd over there. So I'm just wondering what the current plans are in terms of replacing what is gone now with something that is going to be usable and will accommodate the folks over there. Also wondering if we could get an update on what the status is of the bus, planned bus shelter at Ridgewood High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Boyd.
Good evening, everyone. I came to express my appreciation to the. Nancy Brennan, Hill Ridgewood. I came to express my appreciation to the owner of the Health Barn. She's been operating the Health Barn for 10 years and to celebrate the 10 years, she's going to plant 10 trees, $3,500 at Habernacle. And I think that's just one of the best things you can do for the village of Ridgewood. It really makes my heart sing when I hear about trees being put in the ground. And I just had occasion this week to drive around the parking lot by Cottage Place. And I knew it had happened, but I hadn't been over there to look at it. And these trees lining up and down, up and down, all the cement bordering. And I have to say thanks to Adam Brown and to Chris Rootenhouse because I know talking together and working together, they managed to do that. And that eliminated, or will eliminate as these trees get bigger, another hotspot in the town. So just wonderful things happening. And the pots, the Project Pride, which is now going to be Ridgewood Beautification, do I have that right? Well, I'm looking forward to that. There's going to be more pots and more flowers and we're hoping some of them will attract humming bees and butterflies. And that would be just absolutely lovely. So we're getting there. You know, there are some things that, you know, I'm still hopeful about, but I know some people haven't swung their hearts to it yet, but I'm hopeful. You know, I have to say, plastic, doesn't make my heart jump for joy. Grass, yes. So just keep thinking about it and we'll see if we can get there. And the other thing that I'm so excited about, and I know Siobhan is going to tell me it's two years away, you don't know what's going to happen, but nevertheless, I can see a beautiful garden on Franklin. I can see trees, I can see plants, I can see flowers. I can see people walking through it and breathing a sigh of relief. I can see stores around there being happy because there are more people walking through the town. Well, anyway, so thank you, thank you to Health Barn. That's really, that's really primarily why I came.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else? Seeing no one, and we have no one on hybrid access, I'm going to close public comment. Boyd, rest assured that that's going to be, the bus station is going to be in Keith's manager report, which is coming up next. And Nancy, thank you so much for coming by to, you know, with, you know, just, just good thoughts and happiness. And, and just so you know, while we, we try and fulfill everyone's desires, when we talk about planting things, your voice is ringing in all of our ears all the time. So thanks very much.
And thank you for your service on the Shade Tree Commission, Nancy.
That's what I also want to say is a fun fact for the councils, Nancy is the co-chair with Adam Brown. And all of these things happen because she makes them and makes meaningful recommendations. And she is a purist in terms of trees, but when it comes to being a chair, she's a pragmatist. And so thank you for everything you've done too.
I agree.
That is high praise, actually. I like that. So anybody else have any comments? No, and with that, let's go right to our manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. And Boyd, the first thing on my agenda tonight is the bus station. Gabriella, can you key up that picture? There we go. So this behind us happened early this morning at about 7:30. As everybody knows, the bus station down at Van Ness Square has been closed since circa 2017 or so. After multiple architects and structural engineers came to Ridgewood and reviewed this building, inspected it, looked through it, did walkthroughs. Everyone was conclusive that the structure unfortunately could not be saved. I know that there was discussion in the past about some historic value or at least some nostalgic value relative to this building, which is why we went and sought a second and third opinion. But it was conclusive that the building needed to be demolished. So I want to thank Chris Ruttershouser, Rich Charlton from our Signal Division, all the folks at Signal who helped with this project this morning. Gab, if you take us to the second picture, other than the cement there being a little dry, a little more dry now than it was when this picture was taken. To be honest, you wouldn't even know that the bus station was there after the men completed their work. So tomorrow morning, we will relocate, as Mr. Loving said, the bus shelter that is out back here at Village Hall to this location on a temporary basis. We want to make sure that people have cover from the elements, which they did on a limited basis with the old building, but will, for the time being, have with the relocation of that unit. We met today with representatives from the Historic Preservation Commission, along with our engineering department and our police department, myself, Councilmember Winograd, to talk about the long-term solution for this space. So we are in the process right now of reviewing multiple structures that could be placed there. Some of them are from the manufacturer Polygon, who's doing the pavilion up at Habernacle Park. But we are looking through multiple options. And at the May 12th, I believe it is, Historic Preservation Commission meeting, this will be an agenda item. I plan to be present with Councilmembers Whites and Winograd to talk this through with the full HBC to make sure that the permanent bus stop that will be placed there will fit the historic nature of our downtown, make sure that the aesthetics are in order, and figure out how to best utilize that corner for commuters and visitors to our downtown area. So again, just a big shout out to Signal for doing this. I know it was a little bit of a shock because that building was there for a long time. I saw some of the comments on, online as well. But I have to tell you, it's another example of us being able to clear up an area that was lingering for a while, certainly needed some tender love and care. And I'm very optimistic that the next step in choosing a permanent structure will fit the character of that neighborhood. Any questions on that before we move on? Siobhan, you have anything you want to add?
I just want to say thank you to everybody who made it happen. And because Nancy's here, we also have discussed this in addition to HBC with committees like the Green Team and Shade Tree. And there is a clamoring to add elements of green to there. If you go by the bus station, the remaining buffer strip, we're looking at some plantings there, similar to what we've done in the Cottage Place lot. So the full proposal will go to HBC because HBC has to approve it before us. And then it'll come to us and then we'll go out with the funding. We did, just in terms of some of the comments online, prior to this, we did navigate some work with the Governor's Office for available funds and we are still hopeful that they will be a part of that.
So I actually spoke to the Department of Transportation today, I failed to mention that. We had discussions with them about taking some of the rolling grant money that's available to fund whatever structure goes here on a permanent basis. Initially, those conversations were in regard to rehabbing this building until we had those conclusive reports from the, from the architects and the structural engineers. So now we're going to look to secure some of that funding from the DOT this year in order to help offset the costs of the structure that will be placed there.
And I just want to thank you. I know the HBC is extremely interested in getting a hold of some of the proposals. They have a lot of great ideas and I think their input's going to be really valuable. So thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you.
Please keep CB DAC in the loop.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna vet this and make sure that it's the right fit for, for that location.
And I wanted to just add one thing with Evan. So HPC's been integral and Evan and I have been going back and forth. They, obviously, they have Class A membership, which has technical skills, and they've been very generous with their time. But we did, because there, it was an expensive structure to begin with, we did reclaim some elements. So as you looked at the bottom, there was some really nice slate. We've put that in storage. We'd like to incorporate that in a future plan of development, like stepping stones in a park. And the original floor is still there with the original footprint. So that's just great. And everyone, everyone has been super helpful with this and we're very excited. And so if we get more money from the state, we have a beautiful gateway and we had, all of our committees had a hand in it.
And just to be clear, the funding would come from the Department of Transportation, not New Jersey Transit. So I don't want to get the two confused, it would come from the State Department of Transportation.
And I just want to say that for anybody interested, we not only took a good, hard look and a second look, but at some point, we took a third look and we brought other people in to make sure. Because it was an attractive structure that was no longer usable. And it had been basically condemned for the last couple of years, it was locked. And so, you know, we couldn't use it, but we wanted to make absolutely certain before we knocked it down. And we made absolutely certain it was not salvageable. And, you know, we were a little, some of us were a little disappointed about that. But it is what it is. And so I really do want to thank Keith and Siobhan, I know worked very hard on this, and our staff to make sure that we came up with the right results. So ready to go.
Just a few other items, Mayor. First, we continue to meet on the budget with Bob Bruni and his team in the Finance Department. Next Tuesday night, April 1st, at 5:00 PM, we'll have the last of our budget meetings. And we should be set to introduce the 2025 operating budget at our April 9th council meeting. So looking forward to that. The Flood Committee met this afternoon at 4 o'clock. We had a very busy day here at Village Hall. And very pleased that the Flood Committee, for the first time, was able to be briefed directly by the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers is definitely going through a transition right now with the change of administration in Washington and the different funding bills that have been considered, continuing resolutions and the like. So they probably will not have a total perspective on funding until sometime mid-year. However, we did share with them the money that we're proposing in the capital budget and some of the old capital money that we have available for flood mitigation. So we do see some opportunities this year to share a 50/50 cost responsibility with the Army Corps on doing some of the short-term initiatives throughout the flood areas here in the village of Ridgewood. So more to come on that, but I think the committee walked away from today's meeting having a much better understanding of the relationship that we're going to pursue with the Army Corps of Engineers. Very pleased to report that the field lighting for the girls softball field was delivered last week. It's out back here on Veterans Field. The poles will be erected the week of May 12th. PSENG is finishing up the service in conjunction with our Signal Division. So I really want to thank Parks and Recreation, Signal, all the different entities here in the village who have worked hard engineering to put together this additional Phase 2 of our lighting project. And as I said, it should be up and running by the end of May. And finally, today, we launched the Age Friendly Transportation and Community Programming Survey online. That information will be going out to the senior community through a variety of means, but mainly by email. But anyone who wishes to fill out that survey can go to the Village homepage and go to the Spotlight section. And the most recent post is a link directly to the Age Friendly Survey. So I want to thank Carolyn, my office, Sheila Brogan, and Beth Abbott for helping us to put that together, along with folks over at the Community Center and at Parks and Recreation. We're hopeful to get some real good tangible information that we can use in planning for senior programming and especially for transportation as we move forward. Under announcements tonight, the Ridgewood Arts Council presents Children in the Arts, Sunday, March 30th, from 2:00 to 3:00 at The Stable. The children featured in this session will share their interests, talent, and involvement in their chosen art form with the audience. All ages are welcome. Village Hall will be closed on Friday, April 18th, in observance of Good Friday. There'll be no garbage and no recycling pickup on that day, and the recycling center will be closed. The Chamber of Commerce presents Easter in the Park at Van Ness Square on Saturday, April 19th, from 11:00 to 2:00. They'll have an egg hunt, the Easter Bunny will be there for pictures, there'll be music games and vendors. Any questions, please contact the Chamber of Commerce. The RBSA Opening Day Parade for Baseball and Softball will take place on Saturday, April 26th. Parade will begin at 9:00 AM at the train station and continue down Ridgewood Avenue to Maple Avenue and end at Veterans Field. The 2025 Daffodil Festival and Earth Day Fair will take place on Sunday, April 27th, in Memorial Park at Van Ness Square from 11:00 AM to 2:30 PM. There'll be goat yoga, a petting zoo, music, educational displays, demonstration and crafts. And there'll be vendors specializing in sustainability and natural products. Also, big highlight of that day is the Daffy Dog Parade, which will be at 12:30. The registration for that parade begins at noon at the Ridgewood Veterinary Hospital booth. And finally, Village Council meeting's upcoming. As I mentioned earlier, Tuesday, April 1st, at 5:00 PM will be our final budget meeting. April 5th will be a work session. April 9th will be the public meeting. April 23rd will be a work session. All begin at 7:30 PM. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thanks, Keith. I just want to take a moment on the girls softball lighting project to again thank all of the organizations that made that possible, who they all ponied up to make sure that girls softball was treated equally with every other sport. And it was soccer, RBSA, lacrosse, football. The Board of Education came in big and so did Bergen County. So again, this doesn't happen without everybody working together on this. And with that, let's move on. Frank?
Thanks, Mayor. So first, to play off of the Daffodil Festival and the goat yoga, Evan and I will be there participating, so. In matching outfits again?
Which one's going to be the goat?
So with that, I'll start with the open space. We met on March 13th. We talked about the Green Acres diversion and how the last appraisal is in. And so we've moved to the next step for Green Acres to review it. And then we also talked about, once that diversion is cleared, all the potential grants that we could go after and how it would benefit our town. Park walks will be happening again this year, so we talked about what dates and who will lead them. Town Garage, the open space, discussed of how they want to be an active voice for ideas of what should be done with the property. Daffodil Festival, again, they will be attending, this is open space. They want to engage with residents and, and help explain what the value of open space is in our village. And then we had a lot of discussion about the open space tax. As people know, there is a dedicated open space tax, which is currently one half of one cent for every hundred dollars your property is assessed. And now that real estate prices are soaring through the roof, the discussions were about, can we still operate and meet open space mission to purchase properties with, when the properties are outpacing what our savings are? Citizen Safety met on March 20th. I want to say the representatives from Engineering and Police did an excellent job addressing the residents' concern. And for those that are watching residents, I would say this committee is awesome. It's a great way to engage with our staff and to have your concerns heard. So I really would encourage anybody from the public to show up. We had two residents that talked about a speeding issue on North Monroe, especially around Fairmount Road, which has a crosswalk and a lot of kids used to go to school. And our police department is following up with that. The police department also reported that surveys will be going out this week to residents on or near West Saddle River Road to gather their feedback on the county potentially installing rumble strips and the noise that that would create. Site triangle obstructions. In the past month, we had 11 more properties come into compliance. So the recent summonses that have been going out are working. West Glen sidewalks, engineering has submitted plans to the DEP and is awaiting their review before we can move forward on those. Central Business District, we discussed the new e-bike ordinance and everyone cheered with joy. At Kennelworth and Laurel, that discussed how a thermoplastic stop sign will be embedded on Laurel and how that, when that action was taken on spring, we saw a drop in accidents. And that we're going to do some intersections ahead sign on Kennelworth so that people know to slow down. And finally, the PRC Board met last night. We talked about the job fair that was held on March 12th and how it was a huge success. There was over 100 applications submitted that day, which is awesome. As everything else, we talked about the Daffodil Festival. And the theme this year is H2 Optimize, Protecting Our Water. We discussed the various parks, that the pavilion is almost done at Habernacle, which is awesome. As Keith said, the lights on Vet's Field is close and we're waiting for PSENG to hook up the service. Fields at Hawes will reopen in late April. And then finally, talked about, there's a New York, New Jersey Trail proposal where some of our trails and our parks, such as Groves, Kings Pond, and Habernacle will be refurbished and developed, thanks to that. And then last, that our Community Center is having a lunch and learn on Tuesday, April 22nd. You have to sign up to go, but it's something that we're really excited about launching. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Frank. Siobhan?
Sure, thank you. So again, we've had some audio problems. If anybody can't hear me or Evan, I'm speaking for both of us, give us a sign and we'll speak more directly into the mic. So Stigma Free had a meeting and I'm very happy to announce, you've heard this possibly before, that we've won the Healthy Town Award. So I would encourage you guys to do goat yoga because it's healthy and it's good for your heart. Stigma Free is also going to be running a first aid toolkit for mental health, which is a very unique program. So everybody can learn coping mechanisms, particularly people who are in caregiver positions, special needs community parents, and that's available and posted on, online. I want to congratulate all the students. There's an ongoing sticker contest for Stigma Free and we had several Ridgewood students participate in it. And I'm hoping we have a winner. My inner competitor feels that one of our students is going to get it. And just as a gentle reminder, May is Mental Health Awareness Month and there's many facets to mental health and Stigma Free. If anybody feels that we should be discussing anything that we failed to mention up here, please reach out. A huge part of becoming Stigma Free is embracing it and simply talking about it. So be on the lookout for the inclusion of mental health awareness and wellness efforts throughout the month of May. And thank you to Dawn and everybody who makes a lot of that happen. For Access, we had our monthly meeting and we were all things playground. Katie Frye from, from Parks came to talk about the new playground structure at Habernacle. And I want to go over some basic vocabulary. ADA and accessible. ADA in accessible does not mean inclusive. And inclusive, by definition, because we have some lawyers up here, really hasn't been defined. So there's things that we're doing with our parks that will make them more inclusive. Access is setting up a field trip to go and view other properties. We're lucky that a lot of our staff professionals have brought in examples from other places. For example, one of the things we're considering is a feeling board, where people who are nonverbal or small kids can point to an emotion on the board. They're very successful with kids who are nonverbal. And then we had a long discussion about swings. I don't know if you guys have ever realized this, but none of our parks have swings, really. We're swing limited, and so the new plan has four swings. A traditional swing that you would think of, you know, in the 1970s is the lap swing. Access got involved in that, and I think what we're going to have is one bucket swing, where you would put like a toddler, one handicapped swing, where you could put either a toddler or person, and just because it services a handicapped person doesn't mean it's totally used like that, and two regular, traditional swings. I want to thank Katie for coming, and I want to thank her vendor. It's pretty cool that this committee got to meet with everybody, and they were already talking about the next playground and how Access wants to be there in the very beginning for that, which is a unique opportunity because Shedler has a playground in its park plan. So thank you to everybody who made that happen. We also had our sensory-friendly dinner at McMurphy's to celebrate St. Patrick's Day. I want to thank everybody who came. We see members from the audience who showed up. It was very successful. We did have some hiccups that we actually, upstairs was dominated. We had very little space, and we're going to be working with Jamie and Jesse to improve some of this. But if you haven't been to it, I would suggest everybody goes. I want to thank our first responders who were there, Keith and Paul, and everybody who shows up to support that community. With respect to Fields, I want to make an announcement that RASA, which is Ridgewood Adult Soccer Association, received their 501(c)(3) status, which is big time for adults in the community. I want to congratulate them, and I want to say this is an ongoing step to our seniors to age and play in place, which is such a lovely phrase, and I thank them for all their hard work. On March 8th, Frank and I met with the council chat. I want to remind the public that we do have open office hours. March 8th, we met with about four or five members of the community. It's a unique way to be intimate with your council, discuss something that you don't really feel comfortable here. So thank you to everybody, particularly the Clerk's Office who set that up, and if any citizens should want to join us, that would be excellent. Okay, I'm on a roll because I had a lot of meetings, sorry. With respect to Ridgewood Beautification, we are officially Ridgewood Beautification Team. We're branded. We went through and we've purchased new pots uptown. We're removing all our old damaged pots, and we worked with, I'm going to pass this down, the police station and the business owners to highlight, you can pass it down, what's going, what's staying. We've ordered all the pots, Rich, because you're here, they have a larger surface area, which would reduce the demand for watering, and we've standardized the coloring. So we're going to be going out there. May 17th is the date. We're hoping everybody, you know, Evan, the Boy Scouts, anybody who wants to plant can join us. This is a huge part of maintaining a vibrant, clean, and welcoming downtown. We also had the discussion, and Pam, you should discuss this with CBDAC, that rather than doing residential awards, we'd like to promote, similar to what the Arts Foundation does at winter, you know, a potted award for the Main Street contribution of the best pots in front of the business, because that will incentivize everybody. I want to thank everybody on Project Pride who took the steps to do that, and the only bummer is we kind of ripped through some of our cash with the new drought-resistant pots, and we may have to wait next year to improve some of the holiday decoration. We met with Shade Tree as well. Shade Tree is very excited about Earth Day. We will have a table. We will be giving away whips. We received feedback, oh, what's a whip? A whip is a small, underdeveloped tree. It's even smaller this year. And we went with, last year we received feedback that our whips weren't pretty enough, so we're giving away red buds and dogwoods, and we would encourage everybody to come and visit Shade Tree. We're also offering saplings for adoption in the Willard area, and I just want to thank everybody on Shade Tree. These events in the parks are wonderful, but they take a lot of time, and I want to thank Adam and Nancy, even though Nancy left. And lastly, as Keith said, we had a wonderful meeting with the Residential Advisory Committee today. We've set up our schedule. We're going to be posting our minutes. Some interesting information that came out of that is that some of the real estate companies like Redfin and Zillow are now calculating your flood risk, because we're finding, you know, as a government entity, new is a big deal for us, new residents, new business, and we're finding that these applications online are showing climate risk changes, and you can see things about your property. So this is interesting for potential buyers, because sometimes you don't find out you're in a flood plain until your mortgage company tells you, but it's interesting if the flood map changes. So I would encourage everybody to check their own property out, and we're going to be amplifying that message. And Pam, you should know that the green team was very, very well represented. Joan did such a great job, and I'm very thankful. That's probably the last time that all six of my committees are going to meet within one week time period, and that's it.
Thanks, Siobhan. Evan?
So I will be brief. I only had one committee meeting since our last public meeting here. Library met last night, really great meeting. They were not so subtly reminding me that several of the projects are discussing our contingent upon the capital budget being approved, but there is a lot of really good stuff going on that's being partially funded through village money, partially funded through private donations. The library, in my view, is just an amazing example of public-private partnerships coming together in order to fund improvements that not all the taxpayers have to fund. I was also impressed, we went through all the programs that they have given over the last month. Over 4,000 people attended programming at that library. That's not people walking in for books, that's people coming in for some of the special events that they do. It's over 4,000. Again, really, really amazing. I'm not going to read through all of it, because I know we've got an agenda tonight to get to, but would encourage everyone to go to the library's website. A bunch of really good upcoming events. A bunch of them are sold out, so it's too late to get into them, but a bunch of them still have room and space. So I would encourage all of you to go to the library website and check out what's going on there.
Thanks, Ev. Pam?
CBDAC met, and we discussed parking. And our next meeting on April 10th, we will be having a speaker, Jeff Bueller, from the Business Action Center, and that's a state agency. He'll be talking about the benefits and how to apply for Main Street status, also Transit Village status, and what his agency does, the BAC. Then, and at our May meeting, we will be having Park Mobile come to talk to us about parking again, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Pam. And I was away for the last couple of weeks, so I have nothing to report, and let's go right to our budget. Keith? Excuse me, our agenda. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. So the first item is to authorize a change order for our consultant for the Special Improvement District for Phase Two for the feasibility study. I know this was discussed with the Sid Committee, so I'm going to turn it over to the deputy mayor for a little more color.
Yes. Oh, that's what I forgot to say. The Steering Committee that is studying the feasibility of a special improvement district in Ridgewood did make a presentation here in the courtroom to the business community on Monday, March 10th, and members of the audience filled out surveys as to what they would like to see happen in our business community in Ridgewood, and our consultant is analyzing them, and it looks like what the Steering Committee had proposed is what people want to see, just at first blush. He is going to write a report for us. This has been a long, difficult process, and therefore he had asked for additional funding for, excuse me, extenuating circumstances, and that's what this item here on the agenda is. It is a change order for a total of $2,000. And he brought us to this point, and we hope you'll be in favor of it.
Yeah, and I just want to say on this, this is something that the committee agreed upon unanimously, that it was well worth the extra $2,000. So a lot of time and effort was spent on this by everyone.
So if the council's supportive, we'll have part of the special meeting tonight, the approval of this, so we can move forward timely. The next item under operations also slated for the special meeting tonight is a application from Burton County Home Investment Partnership in the amount of $669,000, which has been proposed by Bellagio Property Management for the Hudson Hill, located at 304 Lakeview Drive in the village of Ridgewood. This needs a resolution from the village council to move forward to the Director of Burton County Community Development. This does not obligate the village in any financial way, but it is an endorsement of this application to CDPG. Any questions? I know the deputy mayor had some back and forth with the applicant on this, so.
Right. I had several questions about this, starting with, are they licensed to run a home like this? And we spent, we went back and forth many times, and I am satisfied with the answers. He sent us their license, and they have experience in this field, and it would be for four residents. It's a group home, and they will be monitored 24/7. So I'm in favor of this.
And we've also shared that information with Beth McMenness as well.
Yeah.
So without giving us the address, I assume they're purchasing a home within the village to be used for?
Correct.
So similar like what Cher does, except with different, different class of folks, right?
That's right.
That's great.
And I want to say thank you to Pam without believing. There were some geography questions because of the special needs and the proximity to water, and Pam really did a good job of vetting it, and I was lucky that she included me in this, and I think, you know, this is an interesting area where there's a very high demand for housing all the time.
There is the possibility of getting affordable housing credit for this kind of housing. I can't guarantee that we will on this project, but it's a possibility.
And I just want to say, I attended the opening of a group home on Prospect Street, which, by the way, is absolutely beautiful, and I think it's of similar size, four to six residents, 24-hour supervision, and you wouldn't even know it's there. I mean, this is not a, this is not something that creates problems or issues for the neighbors or the community, so I'm completely in favor of this. Anybody else? Everybody good with this? Let's go.
Okay, and then lastly, for the special meeting tonight, is the acceptance of the donation that Nancy Brendan-Hill actually discussed during public comment, and this is for the Community Fruit and Nut Orchard. As we all know, annually, Health Barn has generously made donations and gifts to the village community as part of their special improvement project, which would enhance the gatehouse facility or Habernacle Park as a whole. Last year's gift was the design and installation of a pollinator garden, and the year before was a new awning that they installed on the back patio. This year's donation for 2025 is the design, purchase, and installation and maintenance of a community fruit and nut orchard to be located adjacent to the organic vegetable garden that exists on the site. The estimated budget for this is $3,500, and the proposed orchard will consist of 10 trees, two a each, an Asian pear, sour cherry, chestnut, plum, pomegranate, to be planted within the area north of the Health Barn teaching garden. All trees within this new orchard will be identified and labeled for public educational awareness. A proposal is attached to the documentation in your packet regarding the gift contribution, and we would like to accept this tonight so we can move forward with the project.
Questions, anybody?
Great.
Not a question, I just want to say that this is great, and that Stacy had talked to Parks and Rec about this, and to be explicitly clear that the orchard is for the public and that her vision is that as these trees begin to bear fruit, that anybody walking by could then take the fruit, eat it, and look at the sign and be educated on what it is. So this is truly a gift to our community, and I just think it shows how great Health Barn is, being a part of Ridgewood for the last 10 years.
I couldn't agree more, Frank. Health Barn is not only a great tenant, but a great member of our community that gives back every single day.
We also put it by Shade Tree, and I just, Shade Tree sentiment was how lovely, but we do want to remind the public that for life events and anniversaries, a tree is a wonderful way. Any type of outside revenue, whether it be a memorial tree, a birth tree, an anniversary tree, these are great, and it also promotes the message that trees can help with food insecurity, because these are edible, and that's great. So thank you, Stacy, and happy anniversary.
Great. And with that, we'll entertain, oh, sorry.
So with that, Mayor, we can go to Jennifer for the special public meeting.
Yeah, I'm going to do it.
Or Heather, or whoever, whoever's handling that down there.
And so we will entertain a motion to suspend the work session and convene a special public meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Good?
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vajianos?
Yes. This is the village council's special public meeting. The date is March 26, 2025. The time is 8:10 p.m. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Councilmember Mortimer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Perrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Whites?
Yes.
Councilmember Winograd?
Yes.
And Mayor Vajianos?
Yes.
The following resolutions, numbered 25-180 through 25-182, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council. They will be read by title only. Authorized change order for professional services contract feasibility study for special improvement district. Confirm endorsement of home investment partnership application, Bellagio Property Management, LLC, for Hudson Hill group home. And accept donation, Community Fruit and Nut Orchard, Habernacle Family Park. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vajianos?
Yes. And now we will entertain a motion to adjourn our special public meeting and reconvene our work session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to call up Director Calby to review with the village council the two items from Ridgewood Water on tonight's agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Calby.
Good evening, all. How are you?
Always good to see you.
You, too. Thank you. My two items on tonight's agenda for Ridgewood Water. The first item is the recommendation of an award for emergency declaration that was made for the Wharton Dyke Stripping Tower. This is a tower that's used to remove volatile organic compounds from the drinking water. Back in, I think it was early February, Bill Birwas, the superintendent for Ridgewood Water, had made a request to declare an emergency because the tower was leaking and was freezing. As a result, that emergency was approved by the village manager and the CFO, so this is to codify that emergency, and it's to award a contract to the firm, PAC2 LLC, to repair and replace the broken parts and repack the tower with new media. It's an amount not to exceed $113,818, and this will be funded through the water capital budget.
I have a question. What is the media?
So the media is, they're plastic balls. They look kind of similar to wiffle ball, if you ever played with one of those, and there are hundreds of them inside. And what those do, they allow for distribution of the water and have contact with the air. The water comes through the top of the tower, and it is then distributed through the tower, and we pump air at the bottom, and the contact of those plastic balls with the water and the air strips the volatile organic compounds from the water.
Those are very expensive wiffle balls.
They are. If you happen to drive by the site, they have been delivered. There's about seven huge boxes on the site. We're just waiting for the distribution tray to be delivered, and this will be completed.
And without being facetious at this point, $114,000, I know that this is the right amount, but could you explain to at least me why seven boxes of wiffle balls is $114,000?
It's not just that. There is the distribution tray that's on the top that distributes the water throughout the column. They have to take the old one off and then re-secur the new one, weld it on, repack the tower, so it's a combination of everything, you know, all the work together.
There is nothing at Ridgewood Water that is inexpensive.
There's one item tonight that is.
All right.
And then also, if I understand your memo correctly, there's a possibility there will be additional repair here, and we'll be looking at another expense or additional expense on this.
Depends what they find when they open up the tower, but if everything goes well, the expectation is that this will last another 20 years. But if everything goes well, the expectation is that this will last another 25 years.
And the good news is, it's not going to affect distribution.
Correct.
Questions? Good, thank you.
I'm waiting for Rich to say he's so impressed we read all of it, right?
That's good. The, the second item is a request, a recommendation for additional award for asphalt trench patching. Early this year, we awarded a contract to do our asphalt trench patching. This is the base repair that occurs for any of the emergency openings that we do on roadways. We had done an initial award for the contract for $50,000, but at this time, we're requesting additional $100,000 due to the influx of water main breaks that occurred pretty much from the beginning of the year through the whole month of January and part of February. 30 water main breaks in 2025.
Wow.
So we're expecting more through the rest of this, this season, and, you know, so we need to provide extra money for that base paving. This is funded out of the water operating budget.
Questions?
Could you say that, how many were there?
Thirty five, 30.
Wow.
30 water main breaks.
In 2024?
25.
Already?
Yes.
How does that compare to the same time period last year?
I don't know the exact multiplier, but it's a lot more.
You think it's because of the cold weather?
It was also significantly cold, yeah.
Yes.
The temperatures play a huge role in, especially when it, when the temperature
fluctuates.
fluctuates significantly during the season.
Where those, those swings from cold, hot, cold. And there were, there were multiple throughout the, the area.
When you go in to fix the break, do you replace the main, or do you patch it?
It depends on what type of break it is. In most cases, it's a patch, which is in the form of a, a coupling, repair coupling that goes around the main. It's like a, it, it, try to describe, but it's a plastic gasket, a rubber gasket, has bolts that put it tightly around the main and close off that, that leakage.
It's like a collar.
Collar, yes. But in cases where it's too big, we will cut out the pipe and put a new piece in.
Other questions? Everybody good?
Thank you. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to call up Chris Riedeshauser, a village engineer, to talk about item B1. And Gabriella's going to pull up some photos of this as well to add some color. So, just to sort of frame this issue out, when this item was placed on the agenda, the discussion was intended to be about how we wanted to restore or finalize the environmental project at the North Walnut Parking Lot. That conversation has evolved over the last 24 hours into the fact that we have now found two additional tanks underground, which takes us to 11. But with that comes additional contaminated soil that is going to need to be excavated from the site. So, what Chris and I are recommending, and he can shed some light on this, but we are recommending that we take the restoration portion of the bid award, and that we reallocate that, those monies to continuing to remove the contaminated soil at this point. And then, once we receive our bid package back on April 9, which is for our primary road resurfacing throughout the entire village. But when Chris wrote the bid spec this year, he also included village-owned parking lots as an available space for those monies to be utilized, that when the April 9 bid comes back, we'll have better perspective on cost for the different options to either restore or use some other type of surface material at that location. So, that's our recommendation, but I want Chris to take you through the technical part of what we discovered over the last two days at the site. So, Chris, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. That's a great picture of the site. It pretty much shows many of the challenges that we're facing. You'll see water. We have to pump that off. In the far right-back corner is a frac tank that gets pumped into that, and that has to be trucked away to be disposed of. In the center of the photograph, you can make out the foundation of some structure that was on the site previously that was buried. Not anymore, we found it. We will have to remove that with the machine in the middle that is a hoe hammer, as it's called.
Chris, if Gabriella goes to the next picture, you actually get a better view of that.
Okay.
There you go, in the center.
All right. I mean, here, you can see the loader is pushing our backfill. When we excavate the contaminated soil, we have to backfill with a certified clean material. The vendor of the material is a quarry, and they provide the documentation that our LSRP, that's our Licensed Site Remediation Professional, requires, because they need it for their submitted to DEP as we get, as we finish various stages of this project. Next.
Chris, you want to just talk about the reallocation of the restoration piece of the bond, piece of the, the bid package, and reallocate those funds to continuing to excavate?
Sure, but that's more exciting. That's the tank we found today. It's a waste oil tank, we think. It's about 330 gallons. It was a total unknown, and as Keith mentioned, we've already had two tanks. This is the second additional tank that we have found that was not anticipated. So, our total right now is 11. The contractor, our representative from our environmental company, and I are cautiously optimistic that we won't find any more. As for funding, as Keith mentioned, in the bid, we had line items, unit prices for restoration, paving, base materials, curb, sidewalks. Those unit prices, in comparison to what we usually get from our capital paving project, are significantly higher. For example, they quoted us $200 a ton for asphalt, stabilized base or top. Our paving bids are generally under $80 a ton. So, you know, what Keith had said is, I strongly support, is redirecting the value of those line items in the bid to addressing the contamination that we're still encountering and removing. Now, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them to the best of my ability.
So Keith, that means that when we do fully remediate, we're going to find additional money to finish, to do something with the surface for the next two years, right?
Well, I, I, I think we, we do have to have a greater discussion about what the council's intention is with finishing off this project and how, what we want that surface to look like. I will be in a better position once Chris provides us with the unit pricing on the April 9 bid. And what we'll be able to do at that point, Councilman, is provide you with what the cost would be to restore it to parking lot level, what it would cost to try to topsoil, because there is some significant topsoil that would be needed if we want to seed it, or if we want to use some sort of crushed stone, which is probably the least expensive. But we'll be able to put those cost analysis together for all three options once we have the unit pricing back from the April 9 bid.
I mean, so it sounds like we're just taking some money. I mean, listen, we got to finish the work. There's no, like, it's got to get done. It sounds like financially, the easiest thing to do is just repurpose money that's already part of the project. We're going to have to figure it out anyway. I'll reserve comment, because I would like to see some of the options, but you can imagine where my head's going on something that's only going to be there for two years, is to keep it as affordable as possible, and then, you know, figure out on the road what we're going to do there full-time after the soil's done. But at least for today's decision, this doesn't sound like it's all that hard.
No, not at all. And, and the one thing I will tell you is that, you know, we have funding available for this, not only using the restoration money, but we have some, some other money that was allocated for Franklin Avenue, again, by a prior council. What I want the council here to be prepared for is we're going to have some significant change orders on this. So, as we get to other work sessions and ultimately to a public meeting, there's going to be some, some significant change orders that Chris is going to have to submit to get us through this thing. But as Evan said, it, it's the right thing to do. The ground is open. You, you, you see the, the hole that's there now. Let's get everything out of there that we possibly can to the LSRP satisfaction, and then get it all done at one time so we don't have to go back and think about this later.
And I'm sorry, I should ask this question. When you say significant, what's the cost of this that we're reallocating?
I, I, I leave that to Chris. He's the, he's the numbers guy here.
Boiler, you know, ballpark.
We have two accounts, line items, that I would say have approximately $800,000 in them. We may have to reallocate those to address this.
It's going to take all $800,000?
Pardon?
All $800,000?
Quite possibly.
Chris, what was the additional soil estimate as of yesterday?
As of yesterday, I, I don't know. I think we might have another 1,000 tons, but that was before we found this little sucker. As we find the tank, unfortunately, around every tank, we've encountered contamination. If any of you have a chance during the day while we're working there, drive by with your car windows open, you'll get a very strong olfactory indication of what we're dealing with. Most of the contamination is gasoline-oriented.
Yeah, you, you can smell it from the stop and shop parking lots. I, as soon as you said it, I'm like, I know what you're talking about.
Go by the site.
Yeah.
You can't miss it.
So the, you're, you're saying that the additional, the change order for these two tanks and the soil remediation is going to take up a bunch of that $800,000?
Yes, unfortunately, I believe it will. The other costs we are going to have is there'll probably be a change order from our environmental consultant. They've been taking way more additional samples than they anticipated. They do field confirmation samples to help guide the excavator as to how far he digs. Right now, our horizontal boundary that we've basically dug to is the property line. You can see that up near Franklin Avenue and the corner near North Walnut Street. And from there, we're moving back where we found this little sucker today. We're going down upwards of 10, 12 feet, low grade, and materials coming out contaminated.
And how will we know or be confident that this is the last tank? Are we doing any, I wouldn't even know.
Metal detector?
Metal detector, something like that?
If that was my question, how are we finding these things?
How are we finding these tanks?
Like digging it and bang?
Yeah, yeah.
The operator is a very skilled operator. He's got a very good feel. When he feels something inconsistent with soil, he proceeds very cautiously. That's how he found this one today. He found the 10th tank, because we found a bunch of conduits running across the site. At first, we thought they were electric conduits, so we did not do anything. We contacted PSCNG's markout individual, who came out, looked at the conduits. We looked into a couple of electric manholes, and we were able to determine that the conduits were not electric-related. So with that, go ahead, the contractor removed them. Cut them open, nothing was inside. They were apparently piping for the tanks. They were removed. But that's, because we don't know, as we find things, we have to approach it very cautiously. The Monday example I just gave you is one, one way we've done that.
So will you be using any metal, once, I mean, again, you know?
Will I what?
Will you be using any metal detectors or anything to determine?
Um, metal detectors, they're hit or miss, because there's so much steel in the ground as it is. There's a lot of abandoned piping. Basically, we're going to be pretty confident by the time we've finished excavating, because we will have excavated the entire parcel.
Got it.
My next question is, is that, I mean, if we're finding this much stuff that was not expected, similarly, and I know it's not the village's responsibility, but the Old Town Garage, are they finding stuff that wasn't expected as well?
Um, I don't know what, I don't know exactly how much of what they found. They did have some mass excavation. They have backfilled that. And like us, they will have to do post-excavation, monitoring wells to see what impact it is on the groundwater.
Chris, could I ask a question? How deep were you, just out of curiosity? I mean, how deep down was this tank?
The tanks?
How, how much deep were you?
The tanks are generally only a couple of feet below grade. One was about, like, 16 inches below the surface.
Okay.
Which was very surprising. These tanks were installed, I would say, well, they were abandoned in the late 70s.
Okay.
In a manner consistent with that time, which is not acceptable nowadays, and obviously, we found out why. So they were probably installed, I would say, maybe late 50s. None of the tanks we have removed are riveted tanks. I have removed riveted tanks. Those are generally 40s or earlier, 1940s or earlier.
So you're just stumbling on these extra ones at the perimeter?
No, we're just stumbling on them as we excavate through the entire site.
And how deep are you digging, I think?
Uh, we're going upwards of 12 feet below grade.
Wow.
Would you anticipate that there would be tanks that could be deeper than 12 feet?
Uh, no. We have not gotten any indication of that. All the tanks that we have found and removed have been much, much, much more shallower. The majority of the tanks that we have removed are relatively small. Like, this was about 330 gallons. There was a 500-gallon tank, a couple thousands. I think the largest one may have been a 4,000-gallon tank. In perspective to that, the two USTs we just removed and replaced at our Fleet Services Fuel Station, those are 12,000 gallons each. I guess, practice in the old days was, get lots of little tanks, and then you have your stored quantity of fuel.
So, Chris, you'll be taking out that foundation that we saw in the picture?
Yes.
And what about that little low wall that was?
Uh, actually, good point. That low wall, when I was out there at lunchtime today, we were looking at that. There's concern that the contamination is going underneath the slab that that wall sits on. We'll probably make a decision in the next day or so whether we have to excavate that, and then that'll bring us pretty much right up to the property line with 120 Franklin.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So, just to summarize, we're going to see some change orders relative to what was explained tonight. And then, at the meeting after April 9, because April 9 is the night of a public meeting, happens to be the same day that the paving bid is due. So that second meeting in April, the second work session in April, Chris will prepare an analysis of what the refurbishment of the parking lot would be if we were to pave it and restore it to a parking lot, what the grass option would be, and what the crushed stone option would be. We'll also put together an analysis for 120, what a grass option would be and what a crushed stone option would be. So, we'll essentially have a, a menu of, of options for the council to, to consider and make a decision how we want to move forward, not only on this property, but on the Town Garage property as well.
Perfect, thank you both on this. And I just want to say that this is another area of old business between acquiring Town Garage, cleaning the property, cleaning the parking lot that could have been done sometime sooner, and, and, but I think we're all relieved and appreciative that it's being done now.
Yeah. The surfaces that we'll discuss in April, I'm going to certainly vet those with our environmental consultant to make sure if one or the other is not recommended by the DEP. So, I have a conference call tomorrow with our consultant, and we'll probably discuss this and other aspects of the project.
So, Chris, two things with that. One, I want to make sure that we keep the ADA component there, because I know that, you know, a crushed gra, that, that may make it hard for them. So if we could keep them in mind. And two, when we have that information on the, can we get the detail and the financials of pre-existing parking there? I believe it's been an underutilized lot. There's not many spaces, but if we could have the financials, that, I, I know that we've all been having some discussions. I think that would be helpful, too.
There were 26.
Yes, it was 26 spots. I know on the days that we, leading up to the project, that we were notifying people that they would have to relocate their vehicles. I think we were giving out 10 or 12 notices a day in the days leading up to that. That's not to say that other people couldn't park there seasonally and that type of thing. But consistently, we were giving out 10 or 12 notices in the lead-up to the project. So, but we'll, we'll have Bob Rooney in for, for that part of the discussion as well.
10 or 12, what kind of notices?
So, in the lead-up to telling people that we were going to break ground on this project, we were leaving notices on the vehicles that were parking there on a consistent basis to let them know that they had to move to either the adjacent lot or they did have the opportunity to move to the parking garage. So there were about ten or twelve cars that were parked there as we were giving out those notices, letting them know that this project was going to commence.
Oh, and those would have been the employees who worked downtown?
Correct.
Gotcha.
But that, of course, doesn't take into account how many cars might be parked there on a Friday and Saturday night, which is the high volume time for parking. Good, thank you very much, Chris.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, moving on to the budget items. Item one is the systemic insecticide injection for the Emerald Ash border within the Village of Ridgewood. Since two thousand, the two thousand and twenty tree inventory, several hundred of the six hundred and fifty village ash trees have been inspected by the village arborist, and the evidence of EAB has been observed. Subsequently, a first treatment was applied back in two thousand and twenty-one, and they are due a second round of treatment in two thousand and twenty-three. So this recommendation comes from Nancy Beigos in our Parks and Recreation Department for Bartlett Tree Experts of Waldwick in an amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars.
Questions?
Nope.
Everybody good?
Okay, next item is award of contract for disposal of ground yard waste and grass clippings. This is a recommendation from Chris. They solicited quotes for this from three vendors, two replied. The recommendation is for RVH mulch. They were our vendor for the last two years, and their quote increased by one dollar per cubic yard over last year. This is a not to exceed contract amount for eighty-five thousand dollars.
Questions?
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. If I'm seeing this right in my mind's eye, the village trucks take the yard waste to Wyckoff, and then from Wyckoff, the RVH trucks take the material to West Milford. Did I read that right?
Come on up, Chris, you want to explain the process here?
Good evening again. The village collects the brush, grass clippings, yard waste, we bring it to Lakeview. We run it through the tub grinder, we put it in our large trucks, like our triaxle and our thirty-yard container trucks. They truck it to the dump, I think it's up in West Milford. The Wyckoff address for RVH is their business address. Their yard is up in West Milford. That's why I believe I wrote that delivery of the material to get rid of it is the village's responsibility with our trucks.
I see, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Anybody else? Good.
Item three is to sign the second year of a three-year contract for our BLS billing service. As you know, last year, we went out and we changed vendors for our ambulance response billing service for Corona's Health, and the chief judge is recommending we execute the second year of the three-year contract.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Let's go.
Okay, item four is award of a sole source contract, programming updates to the SCADA system at the Water Pollution Control Facility. Emerson Process Management is the sole source vendor that we referred to. Their proposal is for eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-eight cents, and the funding is available for this in a capital account for water pollution control.
Any reason this isn't under Ridgewood Water and under budget?
What's that?
Why is this under budget instead of Ridgewood Water?
So we have the SCADA system set up at Ridgewood Water, at Water Headquarters next door, and then we also have it at the Water Pollution Control Facility, which is the wastewater utility down on Prospect Street in Glen Rock. So we have SCADA set up at both locations.
Yeah, but then why wouldn't it be considered under the Ridgewood Water agenda?
Water pollution control is not part of?
Because this is, water pollution control is Chris, Ridgewood Water is, would be under Ridgewood.
Got it, all right.
Everything on this agenda would be water pollution control. It's the water leaving us, not the water getting delivered to us, that's that.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next item is award a sole source contract for software support for SCADA. Again, this is to Emerson, this is for forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. And the funding is available through the Water Pollution Control Capital Account for the software support aspect of SCADA as well.
Keith, is this for, is forty-four thousand for one year of the three years or all three years?
I believe it's for all three.
And that's what, that's what it looks like?
Yep.
Good, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is with regard to the purchase of rock salt. We, at the end of last year, we had a delivery in the amount of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. We had appropriated forty thousand dollars previously allocation for rock salt. Chris is coming to us tonight asking for not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. This will cover the delta from the rock salt already purchased but yet unpaid, and also will fill us up so that we have funding available as we go into the next snow season at the end of this year.
So this, it's anticipated that, you know, fifty thousand dollars or so of this rock salt or some amount will be our starter kit for next, next winter?
Right, so we're going to, we're going to be able to finish paying the bills from the winter we're coming out of.
Right.
And as we start next winter, this funding will be available for him, Mike Johnson, to purchase the needed salt.
Got it, thank you, anybody else?
That's good.
Okay, item seven is to award a contract under the county contract for a two thousand and twenty Ford F-350 Supercab. This is for the Parks Department. Again, it's through the Bergen County Co-op, purchased through Route Twenty-three Auto Mall in Butler for not to exceed a fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty cents. With the accessories, the total is sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen forty. This was part of a previous capital budget request.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Let's go.
Next item is the purchase of a camera system, replacement camera system for the Detective Bureau. This comes to us through a recommendation from Chief Lyons for Axon Enterprise. This is through a New Jersey state contract, and it will be funded through prior capital accounts in the amount of twenty-six thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Questions?
No, but I'll just say, this is so important for the preservation of evidence. And I had a discussion with the chief, and he agreed.
Good.
Next item is a recommendation from Rich Calby in his capacity as Director of Operations. Rich oversees our Verizon Connect Vehicle Tracking subscription. So this is for a twelfth-month subscription for vehicle tracking and engine connection data. This is through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing System Contract in the amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, six fifty-two forty. The vehicle tracking system is used to maintain the locations and vehicle data for one hundred and twenty-one village vehicles. In addition, five vehicles will be added to the system this year in two thousand and twenty-five. Per vehicle cost is eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents per month, and this will be funded across the village through the various operating budgets.
Well, good.
I had one question too.
Oh, you go first.
My only question was about the, the limit of seventeen-five rather than forty-four. Is it because it's from, does Rich have a different limit?
I don't understand the question.
In the second paragraph, it says it exceeds the statutory limit of seventeen thousand, five hundred.
That's a pay-to-play, that's the pay-to-play statute, the bid threshold's forty-four.
And that's always the threshold?
For pay-to-play, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mike, my question is just that, where are the vehicles tracked? Is it like on the computer screen, is it like?
All the department directors have the capability of accessing the GPS to see where those vehicles are located. We can, we can determine what their speed was, what their location is, all those different things. And quite frankly, it's, it saved employees who, you know, accusations were made about their driving and that type of thing, were they speeding down the street? We can log in, determine what that speed was at exactly the precise time that they were passing that location. And in most cases, it's, it's perception versus reality, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
Very good. Okay, the next item is the purchase of a lift gate for the previously discussed F-350 Supercab. The lift gate vendor is FDR of Hawthorne. This is going to be purchased through the Sourcewell Contracting System in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And again, this gets tied back to a prior capital budget request.
Questions? Good.
Okay, the next is from, also from the Police Department for the purchase of equipment, service, and licensing for access control and CCTV. This contract's being recommended for Open System Inc., who's our current camera vendor, to install new security, access, and camera systems over at Thirty-three Douglas Place, our EMS building. This is going to go through the school shared co-op, not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. The current estimate for the project is eighty-six, three seventy-five, and this is being recommended by Lieutenant Chuck.
I gotta tell you, I looked at this number and I blanched because I thought, and again, I know nothing about this, but eighty-six thousand dollars for cameras, I've been in that building. It's not that big a building, why is this so expensive?
Well, two things. First of all, it's my understanding that the current camera system is extremely antiquated. So there's, there's going to be a lot of infrastructure.
Got it.
Relative to this. But keep in mind, the capital budget that you will consider on April ninth includes that building becoming the formal emergency operations center. So I think this quote was taken into account that there's going to be some
Higher level.
Higher level use of that building on Douglas.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next is with regard to the Kingsbridge Lane Pedestrian Bridge Structural Repair. This is a recommendation by Chris Rudis-Hauser. We are in need of third-party inspection services for the structural repair of the Kingsbridge Lane Pedestrian Bridge. He's recommending Lahida Engineering in the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred and ten. If you recall, we did a previous allocation to Lahida, which was the evaluation of the bridge before it was moved. Now we're going to need their services when the bridge returns to its rightful location.
Are they going to inspect at the lot or the yard where it's being repaired? Also, before it gets brought to us, or only once it's here and delivered?
And while you're walking, do we have a date for the expected delivery?
By the end of May, that I can answer.
Amazingly fast.
You know, I was gonna suggest that you wait here. But, you know.
All right, first question to Deputy Mayor. We're going to try to get some of the wells inspected at the warehouse or facility that they're currently doing the restoration. It would be a lot easier, if anything was found, to be not up to spec or defective, to do it in an unstressed manner. Once the bridge is back on its piers, it's over a brook, so any kind of work on the bridge becomes much more difficult to do. As for your question, when's it going to be back? You didn't say what year.
This year. The track team's been asking, all kidding, the kids love running across that bridge.
We hope May, June. We have to see how the wells test out, because we want this bridge fully competently rehabilitated so we, none of us have to worry about it for fifty years.
And is it like a, because it's one-day install, two-day?
They probably will do, it'll be a one pick. I've spoken with the contractor, I, you know, I praised him for using an excavator. He said it was just barely the right size. He's got a bigger machine there, and the excavator seemed to have worked out much better than setting up a crane. Because the crane, we had concerns about with clearance of the overhead electric lines and some of the trees in the area. With the excavator, you were able to stick the arm out and just pick it up very little, move it back horizontally, and it worked out astonishingly well.
Thanks.
Putting aside that I want to be there when it comes back because I just think this is fascinating. I am curious, and again, I know you are familiar with these things, but we need an inspector to check to see that the company that we hired to rehabilitate the bridge did a good job?
Yes, you want to make sure the wells are done properly. Are you familiar with welding?
I know what it is.
Okay, I once learned how to weld many decades ago. You have to be precise, you can't have any slag in the weld, that can weaken it. So rather than rely merely on a contractor saying, oh, I did a great, wonderful job, this is the recommendation to have somebody unrelated to the contractor confirm they did a really wonderful job. Because as I said, we want this to last another fifty years, so we don't have to worry about it.
Chris, to tag team off of the mayor, in your experience, and this is just I'm curious, that how often, when a third-party inspector inspects something, is there an issue? Just off the, I'm just curious, you know?
There's usually a few minor ones they find. Seldom ever a major one because that's too obvious for the contractor to realize he can't slide it past. They may find some minor ones, so we'll get it corrected. Right now, with the shop drawing process with the contractor, we're approving the various coatings that he has to employ, particularly on the underside of the bridge and where the bridge decking will be reconstructed.
And keep in mind, we do inspections on all of our public work jobs. Most of them are done in-house by Chris's staff, whether it be road resurfacing, sidewalk installation, whatever it happens to be, the erection of the pavilion up at Habernicle. We do those inspections every single day, and we're constantly coaching the contractor to make sure that we're getting the job done right. In this case, this is a structural engineering firm that's going to be brought in to make sure that the, the bridge was done correctly, and that it, more importantly, that it's reinstalled correctly over the, over the Saddle River.
You also have the variability of the transport, so everyone's, that's why it was pre-inspected. So this is very common and technical to be pre-inspected because I could damage it, give it to Pam, and then claim that she damaged it. So you need to have an inspection in the quality control process to make sure you understand where it is. So I, I think it's money well spent, I mean, it's a bridge.
Oh, I do too, I just, it's interesting coming from business, but it just, it's not something common, which is probably why you had the same reaction.
But it was a very good explanation, and I'm completely satisfied.
Your concerns are valid, but like the contractor, he only has, I think, a two-year warranty, and then there might be a maintenance bond for an additional couple of years. I'd like to make sure everything lasts, as I said, fifty years. So that's going to require a greater level of inspection, testing, and so forth.
And I wasn't, I didn't have a concern, I just was curious. That's all, so just to be.
And, and we had a, we had a project not too long ago where Chris and his staff weren't satisfied with the concrete that was being laid by one of the contractors, and they basically told him redo it and get it right this time. But that's why we do those frequent inspections during these projects because if we're going to pay good taxpayer money to fund these projects, we need to make sure that they're being done properly.
And this is out of our wheelhouse?
Understood.
It's, I mean, it's, it's similar to, again, having our building inspectors check to make sure the contractor did a good job. But again, you need a structural worker for this, so again, thanks for your explanation, okay?
Thank you.
And then in addition, before we open it up for people to walk across, does the state come in and inspect?
I don't believe the state's going to have any care about it because it's not their bridge, not their liability, not their bill. It's our bridge. It's one of the few bridges that the village actually owns in our community. The other one is over connecting behind the stable to Maple Park.
And Habernicle?
Yeah, Habernicle, that's the third. We have to do some work up there, it's in the paving bit.
Other questions?
No.
Good.
And by the way, to Councilman Mortimer, that answers your question that we discussed last week about Habernicle. Chris did confirm that that is in the, in the paving bit.
Yeah, we put in a quantity of the exposed aggregate sidewalk, because that's the type of sidewalk there. We will see how we can, who we get as a contractor. We'll see how they do with masonry, with concrete work. Hopefully, we'll get a, somebody who really knows what they're doing, and then we could let them loose on the sidewalk area for the bridge at Habernicle. Because, yes, we know it's spalling, we have some concerns that the installer has to know what he's doing and doesn't let the pan get too hot, because we feel that's what deteriorated the existing material with the result that you currently see.
And that's called spalding?
Spalling.
Spalling.
S.P.A.L.L.?
S.P.A.L.L.I.N.G.
Okay. Because I see that in other, other places.
If you look around the village, you'll see a lot of sidewalk. We're a little disappointed in some of our contractors, we're going after them. We use the power of the purse, basically, we put a tourniquet on their wallet. Sometimes we're successful.
Any other questions?
All good, thank you, Chris. Next.
All right, the last two items are from Nicole Campesi, our tax collector, resolutions to cancel and refund property taxes for exempt properties. One is at block and lot fourteen, eleven, lot thirteen. And then the other is same block and lot, but to refund the real estate property taxes at that location.
Everybody good?
Okay.
Great.
Under policy tonight, we have a request to endorse Revolution New Jersey's commemorative, commemoration of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the United States of America next year. We received this request from Derek Sands at Bergen County. They are asking that each of the Bergen County municipalities adopt this resolution.
Everybody good? Let's go.
Next item is under operations, and this is to endorse the submission of the recycling tonnage grant. Any questions on that? Okay.
Good.
And lastly, to authorize Community Energy Planning Grant through Sustainable New Jersey, PSENG, Technical Assistance for Energy Consumption in Village Facilities. I want to thank the Deputy Mayor and Carol Balkowski in my office for working together to put this on the agenda. Pam, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add on this one?
No, if anybody had any questions, most of the explanation is in my memo. This is a suite of, of grants that encourage you to get data that you need. How much, how much energy are you expending in each building that the municipality owns? And then set up a program to track it going into the future. So you get a baseline, and then you're tracking it into the future, and as you watch it, you realize what needs to be fixed. And then you, you are in a good position to apply for a larger grant to actually fix it.
Everybody good?
Yep.
And Mayor, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
And let's go right back to public comment.
Good evening again. Boyd A. Loving, Ridgewood resident. With respect to the bus terminal, my recollection is that New Jersey Transit was going to provide two shelters for free. Obviously, the council or someone has made a decision that that, we're not going to accept the freeze from New Jersey Transit. We're going to do something else. However, the number two sticks in my mind is somebody did a survey to determine how much space was needed based upon the number of people who are typically waiting out there. And now we're going to do one on a temporary basis. So my concern is that there may not be enough room under that one shelter that you're going to put there on a temporary basis. Can we borrow a shelter from New Jersey Transit on a temporary basis so that we make sure that there is enough cover to have? Again, the initial recommendation was two shelters were required. We're now going to put one in on a temporary basis. We may wind up a little short. So I would just ask the council to review that to make sure that people aren't standing out in the rain unnecessarily. Get it on a temporary basis. Maybe New Jersey Transit will lend you one for free. I'd also hope that there would be some comment made about what the status is on the Ridgewood High School shelter, if you could just follow up on that for me, please. I hate to sound like a broken record, but I will do so. I am concerned about the amount of money that's being spent on Franklin Avenue and I know that the manager said the last time, we are in no position to know whether any of our insurance money will cover it or whether we're going to be able to go after the previous owners or operators of that property. I think it was a Texaco station from what I'm reading on social media. So I again ask if there will be some follow-up to determine whether the taxpayers are going to pay for this. I know that it's funded. Or whether we can get some money back from the people who contaminated the property. I know this doesn't affect 120, 120. We are getting money from the previous property owner, but I'm talking about where the parking lot was on Walnut Street, whether there's any way to go back and tap the pockets of the people who contaminated the property rather than the taxpayers winding up paying for this, even though, again, I realize that it is fully funded. There is some, Mr. Calby is here. There's some work that was done in the area of South Irving and Grove Street when the water main was put in and the person who repaved it left the problem at the intersection. I'd like to know if that's going to be fixed. It puddles there and it's quite a deep puddle and if you're walking down Grove Street, you get soaking wet if a car drives by. I believe that the project was stopped because the winter came in and it's going to resume, particularly on Prospect Street. So just if we can go after that contractor, make sure that happens. And my last comment is that Mr. Calby informed me tonight that beginning on April 2nd, East Glenn Avenue is going to be closed in front of the Glenn School. That's less than a week away. I believe he said that the residents in the area were notified, but many people go in and out of the school property. There were some comments made initially that there's a back entrance to the school. I don't believe that that exists and we need to figure out how we're going to get people in and out of that school and vehicles if East Glenn is going to be closed in front of the school. So less than a week away and I've seen nothing on social media about how that's all going to be handled. Thank you very much. Sorry to go over.
Thank you, Boyd. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. Would anybody like to respond?
Mayor, I have a, I have a few.
I have a feeling?
So we're gonna actually, I'm actually gonna go backwards. So with regard to East Glenn Avenue, we've actually had robust conversations about this. We've been in constant communication with the school district. While you're correct, Mr. Loving, there is not a vehicular access point in the back. There is a pedestrian access point in the back. We will be putting out information on that closure before the end of the week. I can tell you that Jill has assured us in talking to the contractor that the work will not be conducted in front of the school during arrival or dismissal times. So we have that assurance from the contractor. Obviously, that project is a U-shaped project. So when they're not working in front of the Glenn School, they may, there may be traffic disruption throughout the entire day, but we're certainly going to make the accommodations to, to allow traffic in and traffic out when it's necessary at the Glenn School.
Wait, Keith, can I, can I add to that? I just want to say, because Ridgewood Water here is, Ridgewood Water attended fields and communicated with parks because in addition to the Glenn School, it's a recreational area for pickleballers and many youth sports are held there. So I want to thank Ridgewood Water because that was the first time where they partnered with those groups to amplify the message. The first closure, which I think was like maybe 15 days ago, did go out on social and this will go out. And we've asked our community partners to help us with that. So the pickleballers will be individually notified and the sports teams that are using the field as well. So thank you to Ridgewood Water because that was great because that's a large audience of people who are pretty much always rushing when you have small kids. So thank you for that.
I'll defer to Rich to speak to you privately, Boyd, about the South Irving Grove Street water main. I don't know what the schedule is, but both he and Jill are here, so I'm sure they can fill you in on that before you leave tonight. With regard to Franklin Avenue, as Chris indicated earlier tonight, those tanks were abandoned circa the late 70s. I did have a conversation with our risk manager about a month ago with regard to this, knowing that, you know, when you're doing environmental work, you, you continue to dig and you find more things. I think the ship has sailed, but I do have our risk manager reviewing records and talking to the joint insurance fund about any possible claim that could be filed. But I think we are well beyond being able to track down the owners who may have been responsible for that contamination. With regards to the high school shelter, and forgive me, I know you, you asked about it at the top of the meeting, we are in the process of waiting for New Jersey Transit to provide the shelter. We were waiting for the weather to warm up before our signal division could lay the concrete slab that's necessary over there. But I'm, I'm very confident that later this spring, it will be there and it will be operational. And with regard to the size of the shelter at Fana Square, first, what we took down today provided very limited shelter. I mean, if you weren't standing directly in front of that building with a small awning in front, you were exposed to the elements. So we are going to place the unit from behind this building there tomorrow. We'll have the police department do an assessment as to whether or not people are displaced. If they are and there's not adequate shelter, then we can certainly reach out to New Jersey Transit to do something more on a temporary basis. But I think our goal is, especially as it's warming up now, to try to get the permanent structure plan approved by the council with the help of HPC and CBDAC and try to get this new, this new structure up sometime this summer. So if it's necessary, we can certainly reach out to New Jersey Transit. Based on the building that came down today, I don't know that it's absolutely warranted, but we'll have the police department keep an eye on it and they can report back to us if there's a need.
We, we did have the police in all the conversations and there has been, the original plan of two containers was from 2017 and there's been additional bus routes added since then. So the wait time has actually been shortened. So the police went over maximum capacity today. You know, they want to make sure there's benches that can accommodate, but you know, don't create a certain situation. So we felt very comfortable with the reduced footprint. When you're there and you see people standing, to Keith's point, there's only, there's been a sliver of space that provides coverage. So if you look at the, it's 26 by 26 feet and none of that 26 feet really has been coverage. So obviously, if there's a problem, we'll hear about it in the interim, but because of the increased bus schedule and the shortened wait time, we felt pretty comfortable and so did the police because they patrol that very frequently so they would see if a crowd was assembled.
Everybody good? Great. We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Now, we're gonna-
We'll go to a closed session.
Closed session. Be it resolved by the village council, the village of Ridgewood, that the village council meet in closed session on March 26, 2025 at 7:30 PM or soon thereafter, as a matter of the judge that can be reached. And the said closed session be held in the caucus room on the fourth floor of the Ridgewood Village Hall, 131 North Maple Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey. And be it further resolved that the matters should be discussed in closed session are limited to possible acquisition of property. These matters are allowable under NJSA 10412 at 2nd. Be it further resolved that the minutes of this meeting shall be made available to the general public. One such matters have been deemed completed by resolution of the village council. May I have a motion?
Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thanks.
Go.